Testing, testing, one, two, three. Blah, 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 blah. Blah, 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 blah. Am I okay? You got some words. So nice. Such a lady.
How you doing, Nick? Pretty swell. Yeah. I mean, this weather. A day like this turns everything around.
Testing. Testing.
Hi, Mark.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Ready for my day to be.
Yeah, I know. Well.
Wind down.
Expedite this one.
How about you?
Long day as well.
They get the notice out to the other candidate, by the way. The can. I understood one candidate got noticed and the other one did not. Did that ever get resolved?
What?
For this meeting?
Yes, I think Councilwoman Jason Park was. Was notified.
Okay. That is coming to this meeting? Yeah, okay.
That's my understanding. Listen. Check, check.
What time was it?
Six twenty seven.
Six twenty seven. There it is, right on the wall.
Have you received anybody? Has anybody received communications from the other two commissioners?
There's somebody walking in now, maybe.
Oh, good.
There they are. There we go.
Hello.
Hello. Hello. Well, yeah.
Dark.
Yeah, it's.
Like it.
Well, I actually was darker and then I just put more red. Do you like it? Is it okay? I was struggling with it for a while. Well, I could do light. I just had it lightened up, so that's funny.
Do you want to copy the agenda? Actually, I have it right here. Is this gonna work for you?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Not much to follow there.
And so you just got that? Think there's anything that would want to back up. And so. Hey.
That's why I'm so confused.
Madam Mayor. Can you show me where you said you found those findings? Because I've got the email here. It's been. There's the email.
Really pretty interesting. We'll go over it.
I don't. Those findings, it's bottom of mine. Those are mine.
Sure how we do that. This is all new to me.
Oh, no. Okay. Right. Thanks.
You're welcome. It's on now, right?
Yep.
The City of Teleplanning Commission meeting for April ninth, twenty twenty four will come to order now, please. Roll call vote, please.
Hi, Dave.
Not roll call vote, roll call.
Chair Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Shapiro.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hazel. Commissioner Damato.
Here.
And Commissioner Volker.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Do you have any announcements? Nick?
Uh, no announcements by staff at this time.
We did. Nick and I were at the first railroad district master plan feasibility meeting this week. And it was very interesting and uh, it was clear that the the consultants and the public, the people on the committee, we had, we had, we had to do some work so that we were all having the same conversation. But they were clear about what they were supposed to be doing and, and they listened well and, and I encouraged them to put some of the questions they had for us on in the flash. Maybe that'll happen because their work is going to go on until October. I'm sorry, what feasibility? Railroad District Master Plan. Yeah. Then it was like the first meeting and, and it was just information gathering for them. They, they had visited the site, but they really, they didn't even realize there'd been multiple applications or anything. But it was a good time was had by all. Okay, um, I think that's. Okay, um. Unless someone has something they want to add to the agenda, I'm going to move on to minutes. Okay, uh, and is, is there anything in any of the minutes that would make it so okay? Commissioner Volker.
Yeah, unfortunately, I had a few changes, but what I'm just going to suggest maybe. I don't, for February thirteenth, I don't have any proposed changes, but I have numerous changes on January twenty third and February twenty seventh. And previously, there had been a discussion and the Community Development Director had said that she didn't want to do the detailed minutes and just sort of summarize. And, and if you recall at that time, I said, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. That's not, you know, it's not my call, you know? But I would say that in the February twenty seventh minutes, instead of trying to summarize. Attempting to summarize. Following the motion, I think it would have been easier just to take the document that I sent to staff and just attach that. It needs to be attached anyway. Uh, because it's been referenced and was referenced in the, in that meeting. And the January. And the, the January twenty third minute cha- proposed changes are significant enough. Um, we could go through them now, but I, if it wasn't a burden to take them up at the next meeting, I was going to suggest maybe I would send uh, suggested changes that, that could be redlined.
That's just for January twenty third.
Yep. And then the February twenty seventh is what I'm suggesting that my document be substituted in place of
Okay.
The, the attempt to summarize.
So does anybody else have any changes or comments about any of the minutes? No? Okay, so I propose that we take January twenty third, twenty twenty four meeting minutes out of the minute approval, number three, and we schedule those for the next regular meeting. And and then someone, if someone wants to move to approve with the other change. Commissioner Volker.
Um, I moved to approve the minutes of February thirteen, twenty twenty four.
A second. Uh, all, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
And, and then I have a follow-up motion on the others.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Volker.
I, I moved to take up the January twenty third and February twenty seven minutes at the next meeting.
Both of them? Okay.
At the next meeting, both of them. Yeah.
Is there a second?
So, and then I just for discussion. I just want to make sure that's not a problem with Nick. Nope. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Any, any further discussion? No? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next is public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any? Is there anybody online with us?
Speaking of online, I was actually attending that meeting yesterday too on Zoom.
Oh.
But I could hear people saying that there was nobody in the, you know, online in the audience and I was there for the entire meeting. So I'm not sure what happened with that, but.
Were you able to hear? Because nobody was mic.
You know, I could hear a little. I could mainly hear the presenters. It was really hard to hear people. I could hear Davis a little bit. You were really muted speaking, so it's really challenging, but I could hear them.
Well, that's too bad.
Yeah. Just bad. It is.
Okay. Uh, thanks for being there, though. Okay. So we don't have anybody that wants to speak on non-agenda items. Sorry. Next item, number five, is our planning commission interviews and Jason, do you have the questions? Because rather than us sit here and read them off one at a time. We'll talk, we'll let Russell go first because he's already got, he's already has a copy and you'll have a minute to look at him. And then said, Russell, you want to come up and if you can just address those questions and tell us about yourselves, that'd be great.
I wanted to serve on the planning commission because as a twenty year homeowner and talent, a rental property owner and a thirty five year resident. I've seen firsthand how the only finding affects our community, especially with the retail standards on cities taking off. I feel like right now we've got a unique opportunity to recreate talent, meaning to the residents who instead of trying to take all this and.
Russell, sorry, didn't interrupt, but. Thank you.
Testing, testing. Are we better? Perfect. So, yeah, we have a unique opportunity to recreate talent and the image that the residents choose instead of trying to make an existing system adapt with the changing needs of our growing community. And I want to have a part in helping talent build back stronger than ever. As far as question number two, my background in the community service and what volunteer work I've done. I was a founding member of the Talent Chamber of Commerce and served as a member for three years. I was on the Talent Elementary PTA. I volunteered with Harvest Festival in past years. I have professional and personal relationships with many business owners in the uh, in the city across most sectors and constantly hear their opinions of the city of talent. I've also coached Little League in town for six years, so I know many of the parents through local sports. I went to TMS and PHS back in the day. Uh, so I know many of the local residents from a long time ago and have a relationship built on trust with them too. Um, what experience have I had that I feel would be valuable to this position? Um, I feel that my deep connection to the community will allow me to make decisions based on fact and be able to weigh the needs of the business and residential communities when recommending zoning and growth options to the city council. My years of building cross-functional teams. Pardon me? And management experience will bring value to the planning commission through my willingness to find compromise and my ability to understand the unintended consequences of difficult decisions. Having worked with blueprints and CAD drawings in a previous career, I can also read and understand building plans so that might come in handy as well. Uh, this, this position requires a significant time commitment, not only for the planning commission meetings, but also for review of planning applications and other legislation. So basically, my wife works remotely on East Coast time, so I'm up every day at four thirty to five anyway. So I've got plenty of time in the mornings and plenty of time after work. I've got a pretty flexible work schedule, so I don't see there being any issue with being able to allot extra time outside of just planning meetings. So I don't think that's going to be an issue at all. Uh, my interest in city government. I've seen this community grow from a very small town that kept to itself back when we had Rick's Market and very few sidewalks to a city that I've raised my son in for fourteen years that boasts some amazing local businesses, proud restaurants, residents, and the opportunity for huge growth. I want to be part of making our growth sustainable and scalable with the future in mind. I feel that the community we serve needs to have a more clear understanding of city government. And I'm very interested in increasing, in increasing citizen input in city government going forward. Um, there's another section here. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself? And do you have any questions of us? Uh, basically. Since moving here from Chicago in nineteen eighty nine, my family and I have been active in the community on the Arts Commission together for talent, Harvest Festival, Talent Chamber, and many more. I've worked for Sunday afternoons, one of the larger employers in town for the last fifteen years. We are finally rebuilding our office that burned down after the Almeida fire. I've also owned my own consulting business here in town for the last fifteen years. Last page, I promise. Look forward to be able to work with the city government, residents, and business owners to make recommendations that will have a positive effect on talent this year and for years to come. And there was a question on here asking if I had any questions of you, and I did write down a few. If you guys don't, I don't know who to address it to. Perhaps you, Joy, or just everybody.
Go ahead. We cannot, we'll all just jump in with our answers. That's okay.
So, uh, is there anything the planning commission would like to see different about the public input phase to increase involvement or transparency? That's one of my questions.
If I want to answer that?
Uh, well, I would, I would like to say something there because I just jotted that down when you said that you wanted to in, increase city input. And I was curious how you what you had in mind, but I, I guess I would say that I, I find that talent has been fairly incredible when it comes to city input. We we actually have the standard for public records requests through the state of Oregon. The Public Records Advocate Todd Albert. When I called him a few years ago and said, do you have a do you have a model code?
Yeah.
He said, no. And I said, awesome, because we'd like to do it. We'd like to be that model code. And my understanding is with the former city manager that was here that we adopted everything that he had recommended. Unfortunately, there's been no press about it. So I think for increasing city input, that would be useful to the city to actually let people know that we have the model code for public records. But I am curious at some point, what you had in mind for increasing city input?
What, what were you thinking?
Um, I feel like as a resident, I haven't necessarily been as in the loop as I could have been perhaps. And maybe some of that has to do with the ability to kind of navigate all the different bureaucratic language that goes on in city government, which I understand is a necessity, but creating some kind of a online tally or something that kind of shows people what's being discussed, what the decisions were, how it affects them. That kind of a thing I think could be really helpful in getting people. Even if they might not agree with everything that gets decided, but at least get on board and know that they've been heard. Things like putting up more of the agenda items around town at local businesses or having more town halls or you know, events, events at local parks, that kind of thing to just kind of really get people out there and interested and give them a reason to come, like a barbecue or something, you know? I mean, I know you can't go wrong with hot dogs and popcorn and that kind of thing. So just really kind of trying to do a little more grassroots organization of getting the electorate, because everyone, it's easy to complain about stuff, but unless they actually feel like they're vested in it, I don't feel like they have a real interest in it. So trying to find ways to make that a little more inclusive, if you want to call it that, I think would be a really nice thing to be able to offer.
I agree. I, I've lobbied before for kiosk. I, I live two and a half miles, but still in talent. I come way down on the south end and it feels like most of the time like North Ashland.
Right.
You know, so I agree that there, we need more kind of analog things like that because everybody can go to the website, but.
Finding the information, it's tough sometimes, even if you know what you're looking for.
That's true. Did anybody else want to talk about this?
I would just add that state goal number one is, is public involvement in all planning commission decisions and we hold to that. Or we try and hold to that as best we can.
Right.
So.
Cool. That's great.
Without, without newspapers, it's a little harder.
I know, I know. The Town Newsletter is actually how I found out about this position being open. So it's like that half page ad that I had.
It's working.
So that, that actually worked pretty well and I thought that was pretty cool. What kind of tools you use to research the intended and unintended effects of zoning changes? That was a question I have just because it's of interest to me, like are there actual tools that you guys use to say, if this, then this will be the impact or whatever? Is it all just kind of done through consultants and that kind of thing?
Lots of consultants. And, yeah, we're now, we're at a place where we're, we're looking at an ordinance that is brand new. It's cluster housing, but just trying to get to, you know, if we fix it, to fix it, even be, you know, while it's already in place is, is tricky. Yeah, but you're right. We don't, we don't have. Yeah, we don't really have a way to do that. It would be good.
And, and we knew when we were rewriting Title eighteen that we were going to make mistakes or um, you know, not do things perfect. And, and, and so there really isn't a tool that we've employed other than to, to continue to hound our consultant to come back.
Yeah.
Um, and although it seems like, I'm not sure if that is even in the near future, unfortunately.
Right. Yeah, I was just wondering if there's any kind of online tools or any kind of tools that are used by city governments around the country that would help assess certain things. So this is all.
Yeah, consultants kind of just cut and paste from other cities and.
Uh, one last one is just, uh, how is the rebuilding process affected our code enforcement efforts? I did notice when I was building a house, I had to refer back to code enforcement a few times just based on different building codes and that kind of thing as far as landscaping and all the different types of things, setbacks and whatnot. So I just want to know if the fire has put some of that stuff on hold or if we're starting to re-implement some of that or.
Well, I would say one thing is that we didn't have a full-time code enforcement person. I think prior to the fire, did we? It's a part-time person? Or is, is Brad still part-time or? So he's still part-time. Okay, so. Um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can answer that then.
But are you talking about code enforcement? Because that's like if your neighbor complains about something and somebody goes out.
Right. Well, just, I guess, I guess building code is more inspectors, that kind of thing, for sure. So I guess it was more along the lines of just property code enforcement in general. It's just a, just a question as a homeowner.
Our building, our building inspections are done by the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Cool.
Yeah, that's the way it's been with them for a while now. I wanted to ask, you said you have a consulting business. What's, what kind of consulting?
It's a marketing consulting. So actually, I used to work with my father doing, uh, for the retail space planning for that national flooring franchise. And I still maintain a private company that does that same business. So I only do that part-time, but all my day-to-day is Sunday afternoons, but I still maintain a, a small business out of my house that I do five, six different events a year, that kind of thing.
When, when you say scalable, you were talking about it's scalable. What's that mean to you?
Me, that more means like, you know, zoning and infrastructure that allows this uh, city to, to grow with expanded urban growth or expected urban growth over the next fifty years or something. So right now we have a pretty unique opportunity with infrastructure being rebuilt and city planning and zoning happening that's kind of more far-reaching or we have the ability to do that. I thought that the scalability would be cool to kind of look towards as Ashland approaches and Phoenix approaches, how would we make that, you know, thinking about those bigger questions as well during the immediate rebuilding process, but that's the.
So you're talking about boundaries?
Talking about boundaries, but I'm also talking about infrastructure and also just about the types of zoning and types of businesses we want to allow where, because I think once you do allow something, it's hard to take that back. So I think, you know, really thinking more long-term. And I know you guys do that. I'm not saying we don't do that already, but those types of things are just things that I think about.
Yeah, we, we don't do a lot of long-term vision. We, we don't, but, but we have time because we're doing less, we're doing fewer applications than we used to, so.
That was pretty crazy for a while.
No, I meant, uh, we changed our system. So we see staff, staff approves things and there's just it's, it's less than half, wouldn't you say, that we that come before us that.
When we did our Title eighteen code revisions, a lot of things that were type
Three.
Three applications went, became type two or type one, which are administrative, ministerial, respectively. And so that's handled by staff. And so um, that's why we see less applications than we used to. However, you're correct. After the fire, there was a flood of applications. And actually, the city, uh, jumped in with, uh, uh, like a rapid review response team, uh, with some of the counselors and some of the planning commissioners and pro- helped to process applications in order to help staff and it worked out really well.
Nice. Yeah, we just rebuilt down the Old Bridge community down there where Patty Kenny used to live. So.
Oh, okay.
Mike Davis's sister-in-law, I think. I have a confusing family.
Okay.
But he built the house.
Cool. Cool. Anyone else?
Uh, just one more question, uh, going from your application. And let me read this. You had said, uh, um, I fully understand, uh, no, no, not here. Here it is. I've always believed that talent has a bright future, but with our expected population growth, finite water resources, public education needs and budgetary realities. I know the planning commission will play an integral role in the future. Um, if you, I just wondered, I was curious if you had any, if you wanted to elaborate on any of those specifics, you know, regarding population growth or finite water. Public education, it's our budgetary realities.
That was kind of more just in reference to the fact that I want to get involved in planning commissions. I thought it was very important for the growth of our community as you know, like I mentioned before, as far as where businesses go, what types of businesses are allowed to be there, what types of housing is allowed in certain areas and not. So really just trying to help mold that future with you and the mayor's office and everybody to just kind of really get on the same page. And I'd like to be a part of it. That's my biggest goal.
Thank you. Um, just for clarification, you said you rebuilt a business and rebuilt a home after the fire that I heard, or you were involved with?
Oh, no, the, uh, Sunday afternoons, the company I worked for, our office burned down. It was the old fire station here.
Okay.
We are rebuilding that office. My house, um, I have a house up on, uh, Bell Road that I lived in for twenty years. And that one, actually, when my wife moved here from Florida, we purchased a house in Old Bridge and we bought a house down there that was had been permitted but not finished. So we finished building that one down there. So.
So how familiar are you with the city's building codes and, and the process?
I'd have to say it's cursory at best. I don't have a huge breadth of knowledge there, but as I mentioned, I've done building plans for years on CAD and reading blueprints. So I'm a pretty quick read as far as doing my research goes.
Okay. And what kind of experience do you have reading technical legal documents?
Excuse me?
Technical and legal documents. What kind of experience do you have?
Um, I'm in charge of innovation at Sunday afternoons. I own over fifty-six patents, so I have to review very wordy, eighty-eight page, hundred and fifty-page patent documentation and help defend that with my orders and that kind of thing. So that kind of stuff, I'm good. And as far as the code aspect of that, but as far as, you know, deciphering the legalese technicality stuff, I believe I can get up to speed pretty quick.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Is that everything?
I think worth it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Thanks for the opportunity to interview. So, uh, why do I want to serve on the planning commission? Well, kind of starts with a real deep respect for Oregon land use law and the, um, the history there and the leadership of our state in that realm and and acknowledgement of the central role that planning commissions play in implementing that policy and making those, uh, uh, making those goals a reality. Uh, I think the, the, the sort of the process, uh, is really intriguing of, um, you know, everything within the Oregon state law that filters down regional problem-solving process, comprehensive plan. The, you know, everything stormwater master plan, traffic safety and, and. The, you know, everything stormwater master plan, traffic safety and and um. You know, understanding how those fit together um and making sure that our uh processes are followed. That our code is clear, um, easy to understand, um, uh, easy to uh effectively implement. Um. And and I've been a. Become very familiar with the process. Um, and and see a a role for myself uh in this body. Um. Question two, um. Background, community service and volunteer work. I recently just resigned from five years on the Talent City Council. Uh. In that capacity, I um initiated the formation of the Talent Urban Forestry Committee. And served as liaison uh to that committee uh. For for uh the duration of my uh tenure on the council. Prior to that, I was on the um Citizens Advisory Committee for the Urban Growth Boundary. Um, and interviewed before this commission one time before, about six years ago. For that uh role. Uh. Experience, um, you know, through my through my work on that uh Citizens Advisory Committee and on the council. Um, just have a an awareness of the the processes. Of um. Uh, that the planning commission goes through in terms of reviewing application um and uh looking at code revisions. Um. And. And um. Yeah, just have a really uh strong respect for the process and the importance of uh following those processes. Um. Time commitment, um. Yeah, uh, this is um gonna be at least uh somewhat uh less time intensive than my role on council. Um. And uh I believe I do have adequate time. Um, I, those who know me know that I do travel sometimes uh in the summer for work, but uh with one meeting a month, I um should be able to schedule around. Um. Uh, planning commission meetings uh effectively and um. And I, yeah, I believe I have a. Time to uh um serve in this capacity. Um, you know, my interest in in city government um. Is is that it's better when when the community is involved. Um, and um. I really, uh, you know, have have really sunk my teeth into uh the uh community engagement um. In the recent years of my life and didn't have a lot of history before that and and. Really uh. Appreciate the extent to which the engagement of the community. Uh, supports city government, uh. You know, and and I expect to be contributing to the city of talent. Um. Uh, for the rest of my days, probably, uh, in some capacities, uh, and and um I've been in the community um. Since twenty ten. And uh no intention or plans to go anywhere. Um, really uh appreciate the. Being a part of things and the the opportunity to contribute and participate. Uh. Just a couple other things that are um, you know, on my mind, um. Uh, the Title seventeen and eighteen code revisions. Um, you know, there's that kind of a laundry list of of things uh hanging that need to be attended to. Uh, one of those was um uh that is is anchored in my mind is the uh, you know, incentive processes for. Uh, affordable housing. Um, and and um. You know, whether to allow for housing uh development in commercial zones, and if so, how and under what conditions and how to incentivize uh affordable housing development. Um, I want to see that tr- see that through. Um. Another is that our uh our codes in regards to uh tree uh preservation and and care are uh. Confusing and and dispersed throughout different parts of the code, not easy to understand, not easy to enforce. Uh, and and uh been advocating for an overhaul. Um, of of our uh tree codes to make it something that is more effective, easier to understand, easier to enforce than what we have now. Um. The other is, uh, you know. Uh, TA four and TA five uh urban reserves, um, and those being the um. Um, you know, most most likely and most beneficial um parcels to bring into the urban growth boundary at the right time. Um, and I have been uh um, you know, aware of and and uh paying attention to the um. Railroad Railroad District Master Plan feasibility plan and understand. Um, you know, how that uh could play a role if uh um. If there's a possibility of uh swapping some lands that are in the urban growth boundary for. Some um more developable parcels that are in urban reserves. Um, so those are just a couple of uh little things uh that are on my mind. And I will uh. I'll leave it there.
You have a question?
I do have a question. Um. The notion of uh setting up incentivized affordable housing and commercial. Been thinking about that a lot lately because it some ways it. In some ways, it was sort of rendered moot by the state passing Senate Bill eight. And basically saying that in. Our commercial zone. You can build. Um, residential and you might even get density bonuses um if you do all affordable housing. So in some ways, I think the state kind of. Got to where we were trying to get to. Um. But as I was reading economic opportunities analysis uh today, um. Something popped up that. There was, we're directed to try to come up with creative ways to. Temporarily get residential into commercial as part of mixed use. And it made me think of uh when you were leading the idea as a counselor for uh. For doing that via the use of uh short term rental. With a sunset on that in the commercial base. And I wonder. Um. I wonder if you ever think about that anymore. I mean, we talked about it a long time ago, but it's uh. It's just, it strikes me as a more relevant. For trying to trying to get um. Commercial properties built, uh, because we've got. Applicants coming before us saying that they can't afford commercial, but they just want to build residential in the zone, so in their in their commercial zone. And so. If you have any thoughts on that, what I thought was a brilliant. Uh, idea several years ago. Uh, that never came about. Uh, I'd be curious to hear it, and if not, that's fine too, so.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think that's worth reconsidering. Um. Back to SB eight, um. Isn't that limited to properties that are owned by a nonprofit or a church or some sort of uh? Seems like there was some.
So the commercial highway zone does not? I don't know.
So SB eight applies to properties that are owned by churches or nonprofits. Um, and so. I don't think it renders mute. The incentive. Uh, program that was being discussed. Um. Uh, the other, um, you know. We were having a debate. Eons ago about short term rentals and um. And in that time, I was, you know, thinking, well, it's a commercial enterprise. Why not just allow it in the commercial? Area um on a temporary basis um in order to make um uh development more cost effective until um. Commercial businesses are more uh viable. Um, that's kind of a a a residential um. Uh, bridge to um commercial development. Um. And yeah, I think that's, I think. That's something worth continuing to explore. Um, certainly, um, would be interested to. See if that is the kind of thing that could uh jumpstart our. Um, you know, development in our commercial areas, because there's a lot of empty lots out there that um. Would be great to uh have more activity and and uh economic activity on. Yeah.
I do want to say something about SB eight, if I may, really quick. SB originally started off as being limited. As you described, but they just did a bunch of changes to SB eight. I just don't know what they are, but my understanding is that some of this was addressed. So it'd be interesting to get an update on SB eight, because I think it's. Super applicable to talent and. And. You all may recall that. Um, we in the Title eight. Title eighteen revisions. We, uh, one of the incentives that we were talking about was was modifying SB eight to just to be to be in an outright. Allowance uh on the. Uh, on this, in the same zone area, the highway. Commercial. So I don't disagree that revisiting it, uh, but but maybe checking in with legislation first.
Okay. Uh, did you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't. I'm kind of uh. Familiar with the process and. Feel like I know what I'm getting into.
Felicia, I mean, I always forget. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hazel. Um, I was curious why you resigned from the city council.
Yeah, um. Just uh, you know, work and family. Um, and. The mental, um, the mental weight of. Trying to stay in tune with the breadth of issues that that uh the council deals with. And just wanted to. Um, step back up from that role and narrow my focus uh a bit, you know, both for time's sake and for mental energy.
And are you on the uh Urban Forest Committee?
Not presently. I'm an applicant.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah.
And if you have any questions, Mark, I mean, I got stuck doing that. I'm sorry. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, um. I don't think I do either. Hey, thank you very much.
Sure, right. Thank you.
Okay, so, um. Does anyone have any comments they would like to make about either of the um? Candidates? Commissioner Hazel, you.
Um. I have. I've never met um. Mr. Hodgson before, but I have been on the Talent Harvest Festival Committee with his parents, who are both real go-getters. Uh, accomplished a lot, very like jump in and do things and had great ideas. Um. Uh, it's nice to see new blood, you know, get more interest, which is we're always trying to. Get community participation. It's really nice to see somebody new who's been here for so long. So that's, I think that's. Um, a wonderful. Um. Sign anyway. And I like Jason. Jason's a neighbor, and I know that he's very knowledgeable about a lot of these. Um, issues that we deal with. Uh, but I also have uh faith that Mr. Hodgson. Would be able to pick up a lot as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Tomato. You, I don't have any comments. Commissioner Davis.
We deciding to know it.
Yeah, we'll decide. I'm just, I'm just talking. We're kind of kind of deliberating. Nothing.
Um. Oh, wait, I guess. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's great that we have. Two qualified applicants. Uh, I think that's encouraging. It's uh. Tough sometimes to fill these seats, and so that's really good. Uh. And uh I do think um for myself that um. It would be um. Nice to have uh the experience of uh Jason Clark um. On this body, it's nice. Um. The thought of having uh. Another person uh showing up uh. Having done the research and ready to. To go to work is um encouraging. As I'm sure both of them would, but I just know uh from working with Councilor Clark that uh or Jason Clark that it's uh. Um. That that's guaranteed, and uh and I appreciate his experience. Um. I think that when people come in experienced it, it isn't, it's very helpful. As you guys know, I've said many times that. Many hands make light work, and so um. I, I think uh. Yeah, I just um am encouraged to to see someone with that experience coming forward.
I uh, I I I agree and uh. I I I met. Jason Clark. Uh, this is not a long story, I promise, but we were both out walking our dogs about ten o'clock at night. And this nice guy comes along with his little brand new little puppy and 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 he had just moved here and he was asking me about talent and. And uh it was fun. And and then he didn't go away. It's amazing. And I also really love Russell's parents. They're the best. So this is how we're gonna do this. We're gonna. Uh, we're gonna say the name of the person that we want to to fill the vacancy. Okay? Does that seem okay?
Hmm. I think I'd like to make a motion, or if somebody else can make a motion, is how I prefer to do this.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Commissioner Volcar.
Um, I'm moved to recommend uh appointment of Jason Clark to the vacant planning commission seat.
I will second that.
Did you hear that? Nick? And um, so uh the motion is to appoint Jason Clark and uh we'll call the police.
Chair Riley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shapiro?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hazel?
No.
Commissioner Tomato?
No.
Commissioner Volcar?
Yes.
So uh.
What was the count on that?
So the count was four yeses and two noes.
Thank you.
Okay, so it'll be up to the the council and the mayor now to. Approve our recommendation or not. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And uh I hope you don't go away. Don't go far. Good. Uh, okay, I I need to take a little break just for a minute before, so.
Just recess for however long you need.
Let's have a. Hi, the groundsman there.
Well, we're more. She's uh getting a little more and some things. We don't call her every day.
Is she able to drive?
She thinks she is. She's got a car. So far, she hasn't. It makes me very worried.
Yeah.
But I also don't want to just, you know, say no. I've been driving around Central Point a little bit. Probably okay, but. She needs to get a walker and a car as part of the process.
You probably have a partner who's on your system. Mine and yours.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
The foothills. My mom was there. She was perfectly fine. She was a share driver.
Oh, wow.
She was driving the road that. Dying and killing. People in other cars.
You mean she got wrecked?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
We were just.
Okay.
I'm just, you know, I'm out. We want to go. So she. So I just. Ever since I don't have any deposits. Driving the bus. I also appreciate.
Yeah.
We're not especially around here, it's so. Tell your mom. Tell your mom.
I just brought her dinner just before I came here. She's feeling okay, you know, she, I have that woman, she gets one blow after another, just like, just when she gets on her feet about something, something else rolls right in. And, uh, but she's just keep.
Yeah, we don't, we don't recover.
Way of going to. It's just, it's like, yeah. It's a good one, you crash and burn, you don't have so much later, but the other, I'm not, it is, you know, anyway, just with the, and I thought, and those are the ability that I did. We know what this is.
My, uh, mom has, uh, both of her hips and both of her knees done. And then shortly after that, she had a stroke, and it was sort of like this, and her all wanted to yeah, to get herself on, it's stuff like that, and then.
All those joints, all in a quick succession?
One right after another, yeah, it took a few years to do it, but, um, so then it wasn't long after the last one done, she got a stroke, and it was like all of that, all of that, you know, because it's just the same, it was one side of the body.
Yeah.
And so, but on the other hand, if she had, she don't have those surgery, she would have never walked again. Um, so, um, and then, you know, then cancer, and then, you know, it's just like, she just would get to the, you know, she said, before I think I'm gonna have one of every.
Well, see, that's.
Don't say that, Mom, I've got goals. Don't say that.
I can't go yet, I don't finish yet.
Yeah, exactly, she's got more to, more, uh, more to go.
Okay, we're, we're back. We're back, seven sixteen, and, uh, we have some new information here from the city attorney, if everybody wants to take a minute to read it, I would like to.
Um, can I ask which one, which one, um, the one that's titled draft findings, there's two different, are they both from you?
No.
Which one's from you?
One from, one for me is the one that's titled draft findings, I should have put Lomax draft findings.
Thank you.
On there, and there, uh, Commissioner, uh, Volkart provided this afternoon the second set that at the very top on the left, it says goal one. So those are Commissioner Volkart's.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And just to clarify, it wasn't intended to be a second set, as I didn't realize there were findings at all, based on what we received, so.
And, uh, and you're right, and I apologize, I thought when I had sent out, uh, material for the packet that I included not only the, right, as a proposed final order, not only the, um, proposed criteria, uh, and the evidence, summary of the evidence presented concerning those criteria, but also the findings. And I had not, uh, it turns out, and I only discovered that today. So that's what, uh, the draft findings, uh, are the proposed criteria, or the proposed findings, uh, that your deci, I tried to summarize what your decisions meant in terms of the criteria. Uh, and these are the findings I came up with. But again.
Your intention was to include this with the other.
Yes, my intention was to include that initially, and I did not, and I didn't realize it wasn't included until this afternoon, when I was reviewing in preparation uh, for this meeting denied. Um, but I want to emphasize the findings, uh, there, there are legal parameters on the findings, they have to be based on the evidence in the record. Uh, they can't be based on anything else. Uh, but the articulation of the findings is not my, it's not my role, it's my role to suggest what the findings might be, but the commission is the entity that actually decides what are the appropriate findings, based on the evidence that was presented with respect to those criteria. And I'd like to just take a minute to kind of address kind of where we are from a legal standpoint right now. This is, uh, a quasi judicial matter, and knowing Commissioner Volkart's goal number two, he, he, uh, doesn't agree with that, um, but the, uh, uh, legal opinion that I provided to you for your February meeting, I think makes clear that, uh, from the case law, uh, before Luba and before Court of Appeals, uh, regardless of what the city ordinance says, or how the planning commission uh, initially determines what a particular, uh, application is, that is, whether it's legislative or quasi judicial. Uh, Luba or the Court of Appeals decides what it actually is. And, uh, it's pretty clear that, uh, a case like this, with a very limited, uh, area, very limited impact on the overall um, uh, city, uh, that this is a quasi judicial matter. And it was on that basis, by my understanding, the council remanded this matter back to the commission and asked them, uh, to, uh, conduct an additional hearing and, uh, make findings based on the criteria.
Can I ask you a question on that, Dave?
Sure.
But you don't find the statement, uh, that, um, the, the subsequent use of the type three quasi judicial procedure is inconsistent with talent municipal code? Right? I mean, you're saying despite the code, your speculation is that Luba would decide that it should be a type three. But what I'm saying is, our code clearly states it's type four.
Well, respectfully, I disagree with that, and you'll see in my opinion, uh, that I gave to you for the February meeting, I did conclude that even under our ordinance, it's a type three matter, uh, but in any event, that's kind of, uh, beside the point. What matters is how the Court of Appeals or, uh, Luba would look at a case like this, and I'm quite confident that they would say it's quasi judicial. Um, an appeal, because it's quasi judicial, uh, under our ordinances, an appeal, uh, if there were to be one of the decision made by the planning commissioner, that appeal would go to the city council, uh, for a de novo hearing. Um, and, uh, uh, the decision, because it's quasi judicial, needs to be based on the relevant criteria and evidence in the record at the time of your February meeting. Um, uh, and once that the hearing that that meeting was closed, no additional evidence is allowed. Um, your findings are not evidence, they are a summary, uh, of, of, uh, wh- what you determined at that meeting. Um, so what I tried to do was to provide a summary of the, a summary, excuse, first of all, the criteria, uh, for which there was no objection at any point, uh, in the record. Uh, so the criteria cannot be challenged now. Um, then, uh, there was evidence presented, and I tried to summarize that. And from the base, from that, I looked at the criteria and tried to figure out how to match what commissioners said with those criteria and come up with an articulation of the findings on that basis. Now, again, those are just my attempts to summarize, uh, wh- what you said in terms of those criteria, and you're free to disagree with my summary, uh, and adopt summaries that another of you might have proposed, uh, or that you want to propose tonight. But again, it has to be within, uh, the scope of the evidence presented.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Okay.
Um, and so you were relying on both, both meetings, though?
I'm sorry, say that.
You were relying on both meeting, both public hearings for the legislative and the, the quasi judicial hearing, right?
Yes, they would both be part of the overall hearing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that, and then, um, I also wanted to ask, um, just so I have an understanding, um, at, the applicant came to staff for, um, a pre-application meeting on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, um, for the legislative hearing, I should go back, uh, that was the original, I think that was the original legislative hearing date. Um, and so they come out of those meetings and they agree to the process, so I'm still trying to understand when they agree to, is it in the same way that one must object to criteria, or I think you were suggesting that? Uh, why is it the burden not on the applicant to object to the process they were subjected to in a type four um, process, legislative process?
I, I can't tell you, um, why, other than to say the case law shows that regardless of what the application was for, that is, whether it's for quasi judicial or for type three, regardless of how the applicant viewed it, regardless of how the planning commission viewed it, regardless of, of how the planning department reviewed it, um, if, you know, if it is, the, the Luba or the Court of Appeals makes that decision.
Right, and then finally, is, is there a, an actual type three application and another pre-application conference for that? Because I see di- a different date, a September date, that is, I'm confused on, um, the pre-application conference on that date.
I, um, I, I frankly don't know if there was another pre-application conference, I doubt that there was.
Okay.
I, I believe the planning director, or, uh, the community development director uh, notified the applicant that there would be the hearing in February on the quasi judicial basis, and for that reason, they came and presented some additional, uh, testimony.
Do you know there to be another, um, or to be a type three application for this?
Again, I, I do not know whether there is a type three application in the file, but again, in terms of appeals, I don't think it matters.
Thank you.
Nick, is there a type three application?
I didn't go back in to look to see which application type it was. I'm assuming of the date, I typed three, but I could be wrong.
So there is a second application?
Well, there would have been a pre-application and then the type three of that.
Well, we originally had the type four application that we've seen, I've seen that application.
I'm, I'm not sure, I'll have to go back and look.
Okay.
I just want to, the reason this is important is because on completion and some of these things that we say here, in the draft findings anyway, not in yours, uh, Dave, the draft findings are saying that the planning commission finds this and that. I mean, I don't, you know, I know the sign came down after the type three hearing out there that was on the site, and it never went back up for the type four, so it gets a little muddy when you start saying, oh, well, I know as a planning commissioner that this was properly noticed, because I don't think it was, but, okay. Um, so then it gets, it gets awkward, it's like, oh, well, I don't know that there is an application and they, they've paid the fee, but the code reads that I'm supposed to say that I agree that they paid the fee, that I can see that, I mean, normally we rely on staff to do that, but this is a, a really muddy, messed up situation where you switch midstream from a type four to a type three application. And so that's why I was trying to get clarity on some of that stuff.
Uh, I, I have a question um, for the attorney, Mr. Lomond. And on the, uh, the last two sentences in the last paragraph that you sent us, I, if, I'm, I was trying to read it, and I was also trying to listen at the same time, but I really have gotten, uh, confused. It, it's your example for criteria, so so a criteria we did not address on February twenty-seventh should not now be found to be inapplicable. So that means it should be found to be inapplicable. Or is it should be found to be applicable?
Should be found.
Cause that's a, is that?
Cannot be found to be inapplicable, and I, another way to say that is.
Can you say, say that again?
Cannot be found to be inapplicable.
Cannot.
Another way to say that is, uh, is applicable.
It is applicable, okay. Okay, so likewise findings that have do I have, like, findings that have no basis in commissioners' comments at that same meeting? Let's have, no big, okay. Okay, it's, should not be adopted. So if we didn't talk about it at that meeting, it can't be in the findings. But it, what was the date, the first, the first meeting was September, right? Thank you, so, and that, and the comments made at the September meeting are part of the findings.
Yes. And those are, uh, I have to say, I didn't, I didn't listen to all of the comments made at the February meeting, I did not have a chance to listen to all of the comments made at the prior, uh, hearing.
And you wouldn't be able to, because some of the audio, I think, failed on that period, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
Okay, that's right. Okay, so okay, so these so you have uh, goal two, goal five, ten. Why don't we just take a minute and, and read the new findings? With any draft, like, endings, like, one through fifteen?
One through fifteen, there was no, um, there was no testimony on those, so I, I should, I should clarify, uh, in, in the packet where I, I kind of numbered the, the, uh, criteria and, and draft findings, uh, just so we can have an easy reference, uh, one through fifteen are ones on which I did not perceive that there was any comment whatsoever. Uh, and when there's no comment, there's no basis for denying. Uh, so in effect, those are deemed accepted. Uh, the, uh, what I identified there as finding sixteen through twenty-one are the areas where, at least in my hearing of the, the testimony, um, uh, those are the areas where there were questions raised about whether the criteria had been met, so those are the ones I focused my draft findings on.
And just for clarity, that I think it should be one through fourteen, because at fifteen addresses the safe harbor wet setback. Um, and, and there was, uh, there was discussion about that, but check that and see if it's, if, I, cause I caught that, that was the only one, though, that I didn't, um, that I thought did maybe have.
That I, I tried to, um, uh, address that comment that was made during the hearing in, in my proposed, uh, uh, finding for, for finding number, uh, seventeen it was.
Okay.
I tried to phrase that broad enough that we're to cover that as well, but again, it's up to, it's up to you folks to decide what these findings need to be.
And Chair Riley, question. So in the packet, it does review all of the, um, uh, all the proposed findings, and then if we go to finding sixteen, it has the original wording, and then it has February twenty-seventh discussion related to proposed findings. Was that typed up after, from our meeting, was that added afterwards, and how's that relate to this, it's very confusing, to be honest. So what's in this packet? Was this the, the notes from our meeting from the twenty-seventh that went right under finding sixteen?
That was my, my summary of, of what was said.
Okay.
Uh, in, in that meeting, based on listening again to the.
So you put it there, and then you summarized it on here, so this really should be the same thing, right, except a smaller version of it.
Hmm, well, yeah, that's, that's a, a summary of all the discussion, and then counsel voted, and then I tried to sort of fit that vote into those
Right.
Six criteria.
Okay.
So what I understand you're saying, Mr. Lomond, is that because at this point, if it goes to hearing, it will go to the city, it will go as if you know it all. And I'm not understanding how that decision is made to make it a. I'm not understanding how that decision is made to make it a a quasi judicial over legislator. Even though the pre-application came in as a legislator. And I don't, I guess it's not clear to me where. That changed in the process. Does that make?
I, I think I understand, let me try to respond and if I don't hit it, you know, let me know, but. Uh, along the way, and it was after the initial hearing. Back in, I don't remember, September, so. That was a hearing based on everybody's understanding at the time that it was a legislative matter. And then in my discussions with. The then interim city manager. I was asked to look at whether that was legitimately a a legislative matter. And so I did a fair amount of research and you all have a. My memo summarizing that research. Uh, that says. A matter like this that involves very few owners, very small parcel. It's not a change in city policy. It's just a change that applies to that very small parcel. Would be viewed by, uh, in in case, case law has shown it would be viewed clearly to be. Quasi judicial, yes. Yes, and that was provided to you at your, uh, at the packet for the twenty seventh meeting, I have.
Set up a test, a test for.
I still have not figured out how to link everything.
I I do have a copy of that memo if you want to look at it there. It's long.
That that memo. That the one you just handed out?
No, that's.
This is the one that was just handed out here, this one, that this is the one you saw.
But, but Dave, that, because of the language in our code that says that type fours. And, you know, I. I have to look up the Latin, I didn't know what interalia meant, but among other things. When it says EG, in the, under the type four legislative land use description, EG. Uh, applications that apply to entire districts. Isn't that the basis of your decision? That the talent code doesn't allow a single lot applying for CPA and rezone to be. Uh, handled as a type four? I I mean, that's what drove you to do the test under Luba case law, right?
I, that may be what prompted it, I'm not sure, I think it was more prompted by. By my conversation with the, with the city manager. But.
Because I don't see anything in the, I mean, the code, when I said that the code's clear. He said, well, I don't agree with that, but I mean, you can look at the table, you can look at the code. And they say type four, type four for CPA or rezon, type four, type four, you know, it's like.
But in the explanation of the table.
Okay.
Hang on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I don't think we're ever gonna agree about this, because I don't even think. I don't even agree about the answer to the questions, but I don't want to fight about that right now, I wanna, I wanna figure this out. And, and. So if, so even, even if the findings were in the application and in the staff report. If we didn't talk about it. They shouldn't be in our decision. Is that right? Like, just.
It shouldn't be in your findings. You've made your decision, what what you need to do now.
And that's fine, so, okay, so, so like, the economic one, you know, they, in their applications, they address. The economic element. So we, because we didn't talk about the economic element of our comp plan. That has no place in our findings, is that what?
Correct.
Okay, with just what we talked about.
Well, wait a minute, that, the EOA is criteria, because it's part of that goal. It's the economic goal, that's already listed as criteria. Right, so don't conflate criteria with your. Finding. That says, like, for instance, I was making findings. About the nature of. Them. You know, not, not doing their calculations on. On their land usability, their build ability. So they're not, they didn't calculate that, that can apply to different criteria, right?
I'm I'm not sure I understand your point.
Well, so I used, what I did is you, you've looked at the findings and I'm applying some of those to multiple criteria. Because they apply in different ways, the fact that they didn't calculate their wetland down there. I mean, that applies to the fact that we don't have density recalculation, or that we didn't, you know. The application was submitted without even admitting there was a wetland, then there's acknowledgement, but no numbers changed. So that applies to the criteria of acreage changes and calculations based on acreage, correct?
Yes, if if that was raised in the hearing. Give your, your example of the economic issues, I think is a good one, I don't. I did not pick up, as I listened to the hearing, any discussion on the part of the commission about the economic criteria. Uh, and I could be wrong about that, but I didn't pick up anything, so therefore my conclusion was, there was no objection. Uh, to the proposed finding with regard to the economic criteria.
Okay, uh, are there any more questions for the attorney? Okay, so, so. I would entertain a motion about whether or not we want to. Approve. His draft findings. Or if we want to add more from our. The work Derek did and and add more findings. Commissioner Paul Carter?
Well, I'm not sure I'm ready to make a motion to that end, but I would certainly like to take the attorney's findings and. Incorporate them or mesh them together. Or at least finish reviewing them, so.
Oh.
Just because I've.
Reviewing. The attorneys.
And I do have a question about eighteen, I know, but, um, but I've read the first three, so.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm, okay.
I've just been engaged in discussion, it's my fault.
Okay, so, let's finish reading, tell me when you're done.
Okay, thanks.
This is gonna be the dumbest question tonight, but. What, these numbers, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. What are those numbers?
Those are just numbers I applied, so it'd be easier to talk about them. And that, that was the way they appeared. I don't know what it, I I just arbitrarily gave them some numbers. What I really did was start with the numbers that I didn't think were in. Uh, were being contested, were the findings that were being contested, because they weren't addressed at all in the February meeting. So I numbered those one through fifteen. And then the ones that seemed to be more than contested in the February. They arbitrarily assigned them number sixteen through twenty one. But that's, the finding number is basically irrelevant, it's just for your.
Okay.
Reference.
Okay, thank you for asking that.
So, so I just want to say eighteen and nineteen, I I want to revisit, because I don't. I don't understand that, and I don't see how they actually uphold. The findings or the decision of the planning commission. So help me with that, Dave, the statewide planning goal, and stop me, Madam Chair, if I should wait on this. You want, you want, you want me to read?
Is everybody else done reading?
I'm sorry, I'll come back to it, my bad.
Are we still reading? Commissioner Heisler? Commissioner Paul Carter, are you ready?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have. Three of these, I understand, three, I don't see how they uphold the the decision.
Which, what's the first one?
Um, so, so draft, so finding sixteen, seventeen and twenty one all make sense to me. Uh, the only question I have on seventeen is, uh. With app, addressing that the applicant failed to show that structural developments. That's the same as saying build, build construction ability, build ability, yeah, I'm with you there. Um, I I agree with those, uh, now eighteen threw me. Goal ten has not been met in that the applicant failed to demonstrate that the proposed rezon and comp map plan amendment. Would result in any increase in the number of needed housing units in talent. Uh, well, that's not true, like, if we changed that to. Well, it's partially true. We don't actually know, because the analysis wasn't conducted. Of what their build ability is under the current zoning, under, um, um, CH. And we don't know under Senate Bill eight, what they could do, um, for residential buildability, they could maybe get a bonus. But we do know that. Changing. The zone to medium density would definitely. Contribute, I guess we don't know whether it'd be an increase or not. So I guess your statement's right, so, is that what you were getting at?
Exactly.
Okay, and so how come, wouldn't we want to reference that in there, though, the, uh? That because. Existing, uh, ability in the CH and. Ability to utilize Senate Bill eight, or is that not something you'd like to put in findings?
I I would, um, for the sake of making this likely to. Pass, uh, uh, legal scrutiny, I would not refer to Senate Bill eight, because we're still trying to figure out what it actually means. So to say that we denied this application on the basis of something that is not clear yet, is not sound, way to go.
But if it were appealed to Luba, they would be into the record, right?
Well, it would be then, but the appeal to Luba has to be based on what exists now. And we don't even know what Senate Bill eight now means. So I I would resist, I would urge you not to use that, but your first statement. You you mentioned two items, and the first one, I don't think I can rearticulate, but, uh, I think. Is what I was trying to get at in here, and if you want to add language to do that.
You mean on the commercial highway zone, the build allowances allowed in the. Current zone.
We do not know, I think your, your statement at the hearing was, we don't know, uh, that this will. Result in any change in the number of, of, uh. Residential, uh, houses that can be built in town.
Go ahead.
I, I, what I, what I remember is that. They didn't. They didn't do a comparative analysis of. What they could build in the commercial zone. You know, just go in with it the way it is now. That's what I thought we were talking about. They didn't, they never, they never even compared the number of what they could build over commercial. Was what they wanted to do with this. You know.
Would they be required to do that? I mean, they're coming into aspiral zoning change to build housing, and they gave us the plans for building housing, would they be required to give a, to compare what? Could be built there instead commercially, is that what you're saying?
They, they have to, they have a burden of proof. And and they, they, they threw out very subjective language, like, oh, you got plenty of that, and. This will be nothing, and, you know, and and they have a burden of proof to, for us to change. What we, you know, what, a long time ago, we decided this should be. And they didn't say it would be this much, but we could make it this much. And that, that, I believe so, that I believe that is part of their burden of proof.
I mean, part of the argument was, for me, was that. You already have residential build ability. Granted, it's above the commercial, and they said, yeah, but commercials expensive. And it's like, I hear you, um, you know, but that is, is that enough to make us want to change the zoning?
But don't we also have a, uh, study that says we have too much commercial land in talent?
If you read my findings, I, that, the language that I use, actually, maybe that came afterward, um, as I was rewriting some. We have a surplus. But we don't have an excessive amount of commercial, in my opinion. There is a surplus.
That's, but that's based, that, that, that number you're talking about, though, I mean, not only was it inaccurate, like, from day one, because the. Portland State University changed their projections after we did our HNA, and we didn't go, we didn't roll our HNA back, but not only that. We're still talking about. Theoretical growth over a twenty-five to thirty-year period, and for somebody to say, oh, you've got too much. Is, that's, you know. Subjective.
That, I know that the, the projections have changed, but none of our plans have changed, and we have redone any of those, right? So what our current plan says, we need residential and we are a surplus of commercial. So in that way, they are correct in how they presented.
Well, no, they're, they're saying we need residential, and and I'm saying you have residential buildability.
I I hear what you're saying, Derek, and that's, that's your opinion.
Okay, so when we look at. Excuse me, one moment, okay, okay.
It's good, this is good, because.
Okay, it's only good, I think I have a, I have a, a, a three-way rule, it's like. You know, you said it, you said it, you said it, you know, and and after that, we're repeating ourselves, we're not, yeah.
So, well, I. So. Chair Riley, I disagree, I feel like I've never asked this question before, so I don't, when you say, it's been said already, I don't feel like, I don't understand what you're referring to.
I felt like the back and forth was, was getting into an argument, and I don't want that.
Neither do I, I just, I just have a question.
So, but, but.
It's okay.
Spot zoning is. Is planning, back me up here, Nick, one oh one, you just don't do it. I mean, there has to be, it's, it's almost like if somebody came in and asked for a variance, there has to be like. Some really unusual reason for, for just going in to a zone, I mean. Whether it's right or not, it's what's we've got, and say, oh, but I just want to do what I want to do right here. I mean, there has to be an unusual. Reason that applies to that place that would make it be better. The other way, that would be clear to everyone. And. Yeah.
Can I, point of, point of. I don't know, either information or. I, on some level, I feel, I'm hearing deliberation over a decision that's already been made. And, um, and so really, the purpose of this meeting is to hone in on the findings and make sure that the findings reflect the decision that's been made. And it, I. Just sounds like we're in the weeds.
Thank you, thank you for reminding me of that, I appreciate it. Mr. Loman?
I I hope I can clarify a little bit, we're talking about. What I've identified as finding, draft finding number eighteen, which is only about housing, it's not about commercial. There is another finding. That I deemed to be accepted about commercial, about the, the statewide funding goal for. I can't remember which number it is, but for, for, uh, the economy, or for commercial development. And. My summary was that that didn't get addressed, so it. my summary was that that didn't get addressed, so it got accepted. Um, but this one about housing, there was discussion, and I think the discussion was summarized pretty well by Commissioner Volker just a minute ago, uh, when he said, uh, the discussion was that because housing is allowed under the current zoning, the, the idea that this change of zoning would add additional housing was never, um, proposed. Therefore, that's the basis for denial, uh, or for, for finding proposed, uh, as number eighteen.
And a point of information, um, the, the record, the recording, uh, shows that how, uh, Commissioner Volker actually asked if that, if the owner performed that analysis for that reason. The discussion was, you know, whether or not, uh, the housing that is allowed on that property would give or take. I mean, I don't remember the exact wording, but I do remember that you, specific Commissioner Volker specifically asked the question, uh, did the, did the, was the analysis performed? And the answer was no. So to the point of the, of this question, and the original question being, do you want to add language to Title eighteen to clarify that? Um, that question was asked.
Finding eighteen.
Yeah, excuse me, did I say, did I say Title eighteen? No, you know, where my head's at, uh, finding eighteen, that question was asked, and it was answered in that context.
So Commissioner Volker, do you, do you want us to ask the city attorney to add something to number eighteen?
No, I think, I think the way I worded, I prefer the way I worded in my findings, because with eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and, and if Dave sees something that's, I'd be curious if there's something that jumps out, the way I've worded the, these, I mean, I've covered them all with these elements, and, um, every goal and element that was named should be covered in these two pages. But the, um, the way I write it is more specific to
Can you tell us where that is?
Yeah.
Paragraph number?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at Dave's findings, the eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
And you said you wrote it more specifically in paragraph number?
Oh, okay, well, I'll have to break those down for you, for sure, but, uh, what I'm suggesting is, the way these are written.
Goal ten.
Um, you want to go to goal ten and do that one?
Isn't that?
Yeah, goal ten, the bottom of the first page of my findings. You can see what I mean, I just I'm just uncomfortable saying that
I see the difference.
Yeah, like, they, what they were proposing would increase the number of housing units in talent. But it might, we don't know if it would increase it more than their other analysis, whether it was Senate Bill eight or the commercial highway zone. But that's why I don't want to say that clearly, I mean, this almost seems like it's written by the applicant, like, they could say, well, um, or, you know, like, we didn't fail to demonstrate that the proposed rezon and CPA would result in any increase. Of course it's going to result, because we proposed, we're going to build ten units down here, despite the fact that we're going over the wetland. Um, and so I think by saying the plant, Planning Commission finds that the applicant failed to demonstrate that the existing allowance for residential units in the current CH zone is inadequate. What, what am I missing there? Choosing to forego calculations of residential densities currently allowed that would increase the dwelling unit targets under the housing needs analysis. So there, I'm already saying, they have that ability, and their failure to analyze it um, is inadequate. But maybe you're, you'd say that's not, they're not
That is actually the point I was trying to make.
Okay.
All right, and I
Do you see them as differently written?
I, I, I actually don't see them as saying something different. Um, so if you wanted to, if the commission chose to, to use your wording instead of the wording I propose, that's up to you.
Can we look at nineteen and twenty-two, Madam Chair?
Certainly, go ahead.
Okay, um, sorry. Uh, Madam Mayor, do, do you mind looking up, reading along with us?
Uh, you know, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm going along
You're riveted.
Just, yeah.
Great.
If, I, I would, if you're asking my opinion, I would prefer that you settled one matter at a time.
Oh, okay, yeah, good, that's fair, um, I'll, I'll take your opinion. Um, so, um, is there anything from goal ten, then, and draft finding eighteen that you guys would like to mesh together?
Oh, I see, okay, uh.
I don't feel comfortable saying that it wouldn't, would result in, they failed to show that it would result in any increase in the number of needed housing.
Uh, yeah, I am, yeah, I, I agree with you completely, uh. But if, if we want to make a motion about each change.
No, I just want to go through them, and we'll make a motion at some point.
Well, okay, so, okay, so when we come back to this, we're going to decide.
Well, no, I just want to settle it, and we can move on, yeah.
Okay, I, I agree that the, that the language in, in the one you worked on is specific in, in a way that doesn't concern me, that this does. Because just saying an increase in the number really, it seems like obvious that it is going to increase the number.
Okay, thank you. Dave, do you see that as being too specific, the way I wrote it?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
I think it accurately, accurately reflects what was stated, uh, at the hearing.
Great.
Okay.
Well, there are findings.
I'm sorry.
There are findings, right?
Right. Well, I, I thought what we're talking about is trying to bash these two documents together. And I'm just, I'm asking, is it, that's our city term. Trying to bash those in some way.
Just to be clear, we're talking about my proposed draft finding number eighteen.
Yes, yeah.
Correct. And, and supported what you've written.
I, I think my summary is accurate, but gen, more general than the summary proposed by Commissioner Volker, and I think his summary is accurate as well.
Okay.
I guess what I was asking is specifically, would you be willing to take back, and, or do we just want to install that, what Derek has written for goal ten?
We'll figure that, we'll figure that out when we make our motion. Okay. Okay. Number nineteen.
Uh, yeah, okay, so, um, number nineteen, um, policy one, that's at the top of the page, uh, goal one. All right, sorry, no, that's element G, sorry, element G, bear with me. Um, we find my goal G here.
Right here. Gold.
There it is, ha, um, yeah, gold, oh, wait. Have we moved on to?
Those eight years?
Yeah, uh, so goal ten, I just put them under the same, under the goal and the element together, to be reasonable. Um, so, the, and that was another one, the criteria, so this is draft finding nineteen from Dave. The criterion of consistency with policy one of element G housing of talent's comprehensive plan policies, goals, and objectives has not been met, and the applicant has not shown that the proposed rezon and CPA would contribute to the twenty-year supply of suitable land for meeting talent's housing needs. Again, I think, same deal, they did show that if we made the change as they requested, they would contribute to the twenty-year supply.
Right.
Just like their current zoning and Senate Bill eight would also allow them to contribute to the twenty-year supply of residential housing. So at the bottom of the page one of my findings, um, I'd like to take that, I'd like to go that route.
Can I ask a question of Dave, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, when you reviewed the audio, um, was there discussion about Senate Bill eight?
Uh, there, there was discussion about Senate Bill eight, yes.
In this context?
Uh, I believe there was, yeah.
Is it in the summary? I mean, did you summarize it?
Think I did include that in the summary.
Okay, I just want to make sure that yeah, I'm just trying to hear for the consistency of how that, the context of Senate Bill eight in the findings is, because I, I, I appreciate the, the point that Dave makes about Senate, Senate Bill eight and building that into the findings.
I, I, I feel, I, I agree with, uh, the city attorney, though, about referencing Senate Bill eight as criteria, even though it was part of your motion, because I don't, I don't know, I don't know what Senate Bill eight is, but I feel like we can, I feel like this sentence will still stand without that reference, so if, if after the, after Gen City, just take out that legitimate clause that, that names Senate Bill eight.
Which, where are you at?
I'm at, on, uh, I'm on the second paragraph of your housing.
Gotcha, yeah, I see it, page two, the top.
And come, combine the two housing, you know, the state housing and the, our element G housing, and just make it one finding. And, and, uh, yeah.
If, if I may, I, I believe really, draft finding number eighteen and draft finding number nineteen can be the same.
Yes.
That both, those findings are based on the same testimony. Uh, it was, it was what was said about both of those criteria.
Exactly.
Um, and they're really, in many ways, duplicative criteria in the first place.
Right. But yes, that, that's right, so, so we, we can combine those and, and, uh, and not, not say that, that they will add housing, but use, use the language that, that Commissioner Volker it used, except for the reference to Senate Bill eight.
I, I
No.
I, I just think of the first paragraph of what Commissioner Volker proposed, I would argue was sufficient.
But
Uh, and accurately drives the, uh, the, uh, discussion.
So, let me understand the Senate, Senate Bill eight objection. Um, the objection is that it's undergoing changes or being modified currently in Salem? Is that the objection?
The objection is that the application was filed before there was a Senate Bill eight. And that, and the decision you make has to be based on the current law at the time the application was filed, not on what might happen later.
Was it filed prior to the change to a type-three hearing? I mean, was, uh, Senate Bill eight, um, created prior to that? Do you know?
I believe, I, I, I don't remember for sure, uh, uh, when the, when the governor signed that Senate Bill eight. Um, or when it took effect, uh, but I think they finished at the end of, um, at the end of January.
And, and the new legend, they, they made, they modified it in the, in the recent
Yeah, because it was twenty, twenty-one, or
But, I guess the real, the question I would ask is, does it strengthen the findings to have Senate Bill eight there?
Well, so let me ask you that.
I think it raises questions that you don't need to
And so the reason, the reason I thought it strengthened it, and it sounds like you, you guys disagree, and, and that's fine, um, is because in some cases, it allows increased density. So, um, because they're building all affordable housing under Senate Bill eight in a commercial zone, and they can do, get, somehow get density bonuses, I don't know if this applicant could. But but that doesn't strengthen it in your mind. Just that, because it, it's unanalyzed.
Right, I mean, if, if, you, you got to be careful that you, your findings don't actually support an outcome that you voted against, uh, and, and
Right.
if the applicant could say, we're relying, we're going to rely on, um, Senate Bill eight.
Uh, well, that would be great. I mean, if they went
But they can't, they can't rely on something that hasn't, that wasn't in effect at the time they filed their application.
I'm not seeing anything in Senate Bill eight about what you guys are talking about. I would like to leave it out, because I don't know what it is.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Legislative changes, whether they changed it or not during this, and I don't know that they have, but prior, at the time, um, that Senate Bill eight was original, originated, it was for nonprofit, for churches, for all of those things, so unless that's changed, and I don't think anybody can verify that it was, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to strengthen the findings in any way.
Okay, all right.
Don't even think about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, so do you want to strike the second paragraph in, in total, then?
Uh, does anyone else want to weigh in on this?
I'd just like to get the last line moved up above, if we do that.
What last line?
Choosing to forego calculations of residential densities currently allowed that would increase the dwelling unit targets under that HNA. And the reason is, is because they stated clearly to me, no, we didn't do the calculation.
That's already your first paragraph, though, that's
Right, so I'm repeating myself?
Yeah.
Well, maybe I just want to change it to that language instead of what I said in the first one, yeah. Um, oh, I got it all, yeah, good, I did it twice.
Yeah.
I'm fine to strike that.
Okay.
If you want to, yeah.
We're taking that out. Okay, so we've decided to combine the two into one finding, no?
No, they're two different criteria, so you, you need two findings, they can be exactly the same wording.
Oh, okay.
But they're two different findings.
Oh, I see, okay.
For the CPA and for the rezon, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, I mean, for, for each of them.
Yeah, yeah, for, yeah. Right, ones for, oh, right, for the, ones for goal.
Ones for, uh, what I've identified as finding number eighteen, and then you're going to use, I believe you agreeing to use the same finding for goal number nineteen. I mean, excuse me, for finding number nineteen.
Yeah.
Um,
Yes.
So what you're saying, you can pull first par, uh, first paragraph of what Derek wrote in the goal ten and use it as separate
It's just element G.
Correct.
That's okay.
And do that in both
Yes.
You know, both
One's goal ten, one's element G, right, yeah, that's
Okay, okay. Moving along?
Yes.
Okay, and so twenty, um, element H, regional plan, which was originally not one of our criteria in the March, wasn't listed as criteria originally in the March, uh, I think, that's what I said, but I don't know. Um, let me look, sorry. What do you want?
So where's Derek's, um, this regional plan, oh, down here? No, that's
Element H, regional plan, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, yeah, it wasn't included as criteria originally on March sixteenth in the pre-app conference, it's in here now. Um,
Enhance.
Yeah, that is actually oh, wait, no, misread the wrong one, sorry. Same thing, it, it would enhance the regional supply. It's just that they didn't they didn't analyze their existing, uh, uh, ability. So.
Element H is, is our, our PS agreements? Does that what, element H is?
What's that now?
Element H, is that our, our PS agreements?
Yeah, regional plan or RPS, or, no, yeah, it's part of, RPS is
Is part of the regional plan, but it's not the region.
Right. Regional problem solving process under regional plan.
And we talked about that?
Only in the sense that we've just discussed, actually. Um, I think the testimony was that they have a certain, um, um, that, that the current zoning does allow an enhancement of the regional supply of land suitable for residential development. And their proposed change doesn't change that. Doesn't increase it, so it doesn't enhance.
Oh. Now, now I get enhanced. Now I now I get enhanced. I I I see what you. Yeah, I. Okay, now I understand.
It it's really the same discussion we had about the previous two findings.
Well, but we but you were saying enhanced, but I would have agreed with that. The the prior two were saying would not contribute. You know, would not contribute and um oh, you did use enhance there. Sorry. Yeah, enhance on twenty, but the but the prior two would result in any increase and would contribute. I would. I mean, that's enhance is much better word to use because.
Up to you. I don't. I don't. I don't think that to me, they mean the same thing in this context.
Okay, well, then I want to be careful. Okay, then I want to use that. Stick with my language then.
On twenty?
On element H regional plan at the bottom of page two. Yeah, on twenty. And then otherwise, those are my three, and then we can look at the document.
So I'm sorry, I'm are you saying that you agree with the draft language that the city attorney provided for draft funding his draft funding twenty? Are you still?
No, sixteen seventeen and twenty one. Yeah. Only because Dave told me enhance means the same to him, so I don't want to go there. So.
Okay. Okay. Are we all not clear now about what changes that we've are looking at?
Yeah, I'm just unclear about one thing and the risk of sounding stupid. I'm not understanding why in the CPA in the RAC documents, why it says that these conditions have been met, but all of the findings are that they're not met. So am I missing something? Like, what am I not understanding about what I'm reading here?
What I provided with respect to draft finding sixteen through twenty one did include the original proposed finding, and it has the word has been met. That was a proposed finding by the applicant and and affirmed by the the funding department. But that wasn't all there was to it. There was then the discussion that occurred at your February meeting.
This is pre. This is pre.
Findings.
Yeah. So what you're doing now is trying to articulate the findings that reflect what was said in the testimony uh in the February meeting.
Yeah, that part I I understood that. I was just like this. A little confused with the contradictory.
Easy to get this confused, and I will have to say that I contributed to it. Uh I the way I organized this, I might have done better, but I was on very short leash to get it done.
That's what I saw too, what you saw. It was confusing.
Are there any more uh questions? Uh I have a question about if there is an appeal and it is de novo, does that mean that this they just that the city council will just get the application? Or they will get this record that we have created too?
They will get this record.
Even though, but there can be new evidence?
At a de novo hearing, yes, there could be new evidence by proponents of the application and opponents.
Okay. Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Well, I think we want to clean up the entire findings, right?
Yes, I thought we did that.
No, because we we need to probably go through them because we need to strike more of the Senate Bill eight language here on the first page of my findings, my draft findings.
I thought we I thought we were adding to these findings from yours. I thought we were going. I I thought what we were doing was taking the parts of yours that were more specific and adding them to the ones provided by the city attorney.
Okay, um. And so.
Was there some more from yours you wanted to talk about adding in?
Well, um I would have to look at that. Yeah. Just because um yeah, I need to look at that.
Okay. Take a minute.
And I can take them one by one if that's. So goal one is so goal one is just there's no finding because it wasn't discussed. Is that?
Right, and there by default then the post the draft proposed finding posed by the applicant was accepted.
Okay, yeah, I don't want that. Um I don't want to use the applicant's findings at all.
Right.
I've written every finding here.
Yeah.
That I think right reads better than the applicant submitting their findings and staff affirming it. Um so I would prefer to do this the other way, Madam Chair. I prefer to take draft Dave's draft finding sixteen seventeen and twenty one and incorporate them into this.
Okay. Even if there are, even if there are findings that we didn't discuss. Which would be.
You referring to mine?
Yeah, okay, so.
Well, we can strike that language. I'm fine if you want to strike.
So we only want our denials, right? We only want our denials. Okay, so
that's the same. Can I ask um for the chair to ask for consensus on the the method?
With consensus on?
On the method, whether or not you're going to modify draft findings or modify Commissioner Volcart's.
Um.
She's objecting to my idea.
I what I'm asking for is consensus and and I think that's.
Commissioner Shapiro?
I was under the impression that we're going to use the attorney's findings and add to them. It might be.
Can you prefer to do that?
I think that would be more efficient.
I think just from the standpoint of kind of the start of this process and that this that the draft findings layout more specifically each argument or style that that I feel like what you provided is yeoman's work. There's tremendous amount of information here that just needs to be added in to the findings that are here.
So you prefer to feed it in that way?
In into.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, then we have a problem with that.
Um. So there's no goal five. Oh, there it is. Goal five. Okay, there's that. Yep. Commissioner Shapiro?
So you have a highlight or maybe you could, you know.
So consensus checking in with all of the members. Thank you.
I everybody. I thought everybody.
No, we didn't, but.
Felicia, I mean, Commissioner Hazel did. I'm sorry if I missed you. I thought I saw your head going. Come on.
I agree with using the attorney's findings and adding to them.
Okay, so now we have consensus. Okay, uh I'm sorry about that. Okay, so um I drove a lot.
No, I I did say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, yeah, I was under the impression that we all agree, so.
Okay. Uh.
And I'll help watch for Commissioner DiMatto's hand, you know, so.
So right, goal eleven.
In case you want to contribute.
Goal eleven. Goal eleven. Goal eleven. Goal eleven is about open to this public plan. Bouncing water. Bear Creek under this. I don't think we talked about this the um the second page, the uh three, four, the fifth paragraph. I don't remember us talking about that. That's an important part.
What does the paragraph start with, please?
Uh failed to acknowledge the presence of hydrologic slash stormwater infrastructure and and thus impacts conveyance of water to Bear Creek within the stormwater master plan.
We did. The stormwater master plan did not come up. Um however, the city infrastructure of the box with the pipe that drains actually from the wetland that to the creek very much did come up. Um and but the stormwater master plan is part of the urban service and public plan under goal eleven. But it didn't come up specifically. So are we, you know?
So maybe we should, maybe we should add that in, though, about that that stormwater infrastructure that's in there because it's pretty.
Well, I said presence of hydrologic stormwater infrastructure.
But I think we should add that to to the findings uh. Goal eleven is eleven. Add goal eleven, element F. The applicant failed to note the presence of city hydrologic slash stormwater infrastructure with overflow drainage drainage from the wetland to Wagner Creek. Unless you could. Is there some other place that could go that's already in here?
Oh, sad. And we're showing that
Should.
in draft time consent. It's on the site.
Uh huh.
No, because that's goal five environment. But.
But it's still about about the wetlands. I don't know. I I I would. I would like to. I I think it would be good to add that part into to number seventeen. Because especially of this.
If I may, Chair, just just be sure that whatever you add is something that you've discussed and is clear in the record.
We talked about it. We talked about it.
Okay. I missed that then.
We were talking.
Talking about that infrastructure. Do you remember when Kristen was saying it drains the pipe from the creek back to the wetland? I said, oh, no, it goes the opposite way. Do you remember that? Or it may have been in the meeting prior. I don't know. So.
No, it was because I wasn't.
It was. Okay, all right. Okay.
Yeah, we talked about it. Okay, so there's that. Anything?
I have a clean set of Derek's findings. Maybe what we could do if everyone's open to this is highlight like he's a highlighter, what we want added into which one and hand it over to Dave or who or Nick to finish. Well, I make this a little cleaner because then I have a set right here. You can keep yours. I made some copies and then that way we can just.
That's no, that's the.
That's mine. Okay.
It's in that little binder folder thing I gave you.
The ones that the copies I made?
No, I made one.
Oh, you did. Oh, here they are. Okay.
Okay.
Did I?
Are there in? Are there any other? Let's see. Have we done here? Just right through.
Is that okay with everyone? We can just make it cleaner and.
Yeah. Highlight away.
Okay, so here's a clean set. So highlight and then highlight what we want to add to what? And are you good with that?
I've got a clean. I've got a couple of sets here, so.
Um, okay.
Oh, you want me to highlight it?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm happy to.
Yeah, highlight it. We can give it to.
Wait a minute, you.
What?
You you got sort of the ones that are. I mean, you don't want me to just highlight what what I want in there. I wrote these, so I like.
We're discussing.
But we've discussed like like highlight that that sentence about the structure that carries the floodwater into the creek.
Okay, and then where it goes unless you want me to do it, but.
No, that's fine. So under goal eleven, I'm in a public facilities and services and element F.
But we're going to put it. But we're going to put it in a draft finding seventeen.
And then make a note where.
I'll put it out to seventeen. Okay, so what do you want in there that I mean, I've got a pretty.
Failed to note the presence of the city hydrologic slash stormwater infrastructure.
For the record, that's page two, paragraph four.
Page two, paragraph.
Just the last sentence you want?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we can fail to it, starting from there.
The the other things that we were going to put in eighteen and nineteen.
Yeah.
Is is your language that's in uh G.
Goal ten, I was thinking element G, right?
Yeah, without.
So hang on. So is that it from goal eleven? I'm not putting anything else in there.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Unless somebody else wants something now.
Just just to make sure what I why what I heard with your proposal was to add that last sentence in the fourth third full paragraph from page two of your proposed findings to the findings for finding number seventeen.
Yes.
And I'm not sure you're agreeing with that, but I think that's what the chair is.
Well, finding seventeen is based on goal five. It has nothing to do with.
Environment. I think it would still fit because you talk about the wetlands. The wetlands are on there.
So yeah, I I'm talking about the wetlands in the context of public facilities and services because there's a public piece of public works property down there sitting on the site raining water from the wetland to the creek.
That's true.
That's why it's under the goal that it's under.
Okay.
Which is the whole.
No.
No.
No, it's not.
It's not.
It's a large portion.
No, no, that was moved so they could build Walmart. That was a huge wetland that was.
Well, that that box was put in not that long.
I think it was put in after ninety seven.
I my assumption was that that was all part of the same thing that you write because we're not addressing the goal eleven.
Okay.
So it goes.
Somewhere we could find a place with that. That's that's appropriate.
Okay. Okay.
Can you make a draft finding number twenty two? Addressing addressing goal eleven because I don't think you address it anywhere else.
What was what?
There's no.
This is.
It doesn't. It's not addressed in draft finding sixteen through twenty one. Goal eleven.
So it could be number twenty two. Um, number twenty two, goal eleven.
Element F. Uh the way Dave is doing this, he's doing goals and elements differently. So it would be it would be like eighteen point five for the goal and uh and F would be right after that before. So it would be eighteen point. It'd be eighteen A and eighteen B.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to put that out in the side.
Is that right, Dave?
When Dave confirms.
We're going to give it to him. Okay.
I'm trying to figure out where we've addressed goal eleven.
Eighteen eighteen addresses housing. I don't understand.
Because it's goal ten and and this is goal eleven so that there'll be an order. They go in scope and then. So it'll be in order in the findings and not jump around.
To be renumbered later, I think, is what she suggests.
Yeah, so it'd be eighteen and then this would become nineteen and everything else would cascade.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Dave, I think they were addressed in the um because I write at the top of goal eleven, not included as criteria in the original.
Eleven, right.
The March sixteenth pre-application conference. I think they came in the I think they were in the the packet that on the meeting that was canceled last. I think that's where it came up at, but.
Okay, I may have to consult with you, but what I'm what I'm hearing is uh you want a reference to um goal eleven, assuming that was in the.
You may be right.
In the criteria.
I'll look. Sorry.
I'm not. I don't see it in the criteria that were presented at the February meeting, but if it was, then you're saying you want your denial to be based in part on a new finding that for our purposes tonight, I would label as finding number twenty two um with respect to goal eleven.
Maybe it wasn't goal eleven. Maybe it was only element um F that came up. That's that's a possibility.
Nope, there's no eleven in their findings.
Um let me make sure there's no element F. I'm pretty sure. I know there's an element F because I I originally thought we couldn't include it because the hearings officer concluded that we have not appropriately adequately incorporated element F into our subdivision code. So but so that there it is, PLF eighteen point seven five. This is from the
Oh, yeah.
This is the applicants on page eight of the packet of the meeting that was canceled. on page eight of the packet of the meeting that was canceled. Public land and facilities. Think this is it. Is that it? It doesn't say element F, so that can't be it, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. Element E, no, there it is, it's continued from page six, element F, public facilities. And goal eleven is referenced underneath that.
Okay, I see that. So I, I think what you're saying, and I included that criterion and a finding, proposed finding about it among those things that were not challenged. And you're, I think, correcting me and say, saying it was challenged and therefore should be added as for our purposes tonight, number twenty-two.
I, I'm not sure that I would say it was challenged or not, it was addressed in the sense, so maybe help me understand, we had a discussion about that structure down there and.
If, if it was simply addressed, but it wasn't a reason given for your decision to deny, then I wouldn't even
Oh.
include it in here.
Never mind, because it wasn't, we talked about it as part of our discussion about the wetland, but.
Just, just referenced, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, that works fine. Okay.
So I'm gonna strike that.
Forget, yeah.
We'll strike all of goal eleven then. So even though it was addressed, so we're gonna affirm, but we're not going to wait, so we would say that their criteria, they meet the criteria with respect to goal eleven, then that's what we'd be saying. And element F.
But if, if it, okay, if we can only talk, if we can only use things in findings that we stated that we, the basis for denial, then that was just whatever was in the motion.
That's.
Right?
That's correct, I guess, in this situation.
Okay.
Except for the deliberation, which there wasn't much.
Okay.
I mean, that don't complicate things, but the idea would be to say, I'm addressing criterion X and I don't agree that criterion X has been met. Now, the way things normally occur were not that exacting, so what I tried to do is to pull out of yeah, what was said, everything that really amounted to an objection or, or kind of complaint that a particular criterion wasn't meant. And I didn't hear that with respect to.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't laid out that way.
We'll definitely work on that.
Yeah, it's a lot easier just to take the applicant's findings and say it, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Where are we now?
In the moment.
Anybody?
Okay, so I'm striking goal eleven. Go on it.
And well, there's. I think that's everything.
What do you mean?
Well, okay. So, no goal eleven. And then after that, uh, transportation compliant, parks wreck, natural hazards. Regional plan, we got that. That's it.
Okay. So are we highlighting, uh, do you want me to highlight, we've settled the others on?
Yes.
On eighteen, nineteen and twenty, right?
Right.
Okay, and that, I don't need to highlight anything on this doc, on my document for that?
I don't think so. I think we're covered.
So that language is moved over to Dave's document then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Is Dave clear on that?
Well.
I think so.
Okay, all right.
We're giving the, the copy you made and, and then we'll see.
Well, this is the blank copy with goal eleven removed. Don't need eighteen A and B there.
Well, maybe I should be clear, what, what I'm, if, if you vote the way it sounds like you're gonna vote. I think you're telling me to come back to you with a final order for your signature and, and you'll have a chance to review it to make sure that it reflects what you all have said.
Right.
But what I'm gonna do is take all of the criteria and with respect to each criteria, have a finding with a cri, with items one through fifteen, I'm gonna say that was the finding is approved. With respect to sixteen through twenty-one, I will write out what, what the finding is and it will be my language except for seventeen, eighteen and
nineteen.
Twenty, which will consist of Commissioner Volkarts' language at the bottom of page one of his plus, well, just that paragraph.
Yeah.
The paragraph that, that begins at the bottom of page one and ends at the top of page two.
Which he has highlighted for you.
I'm striking the second paragraph on here.
Okay, and then you, Madam Chair, will have a chance to look at that and make sure that I have accurately captured what we've talked about.
Okay.
And then one more question. So you guys, it sounds like maybe wanna strike. I'm sorry. You want to strike the language under land use planning that the application was initially appropriately conducted under type four legislative land use procedure, planning commission finds that the applicant's proposal demonstrates compliance with goal one. All right, I'm sorry, and the, the subsequent use of type three quasi judicial procedure is inconsistent with talent municipal code. The third one, goal two.
You know, I I don't think that we can reach consensus.
Right, well.
About the, the process up to this point, I think the best thing we can do is, is have the cleanest product we can, right?
You're right, let's strike that then.
And, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna strike that as well. Oh, I didn't need to, because that's, it's all gone over to the other, so, okay.
Okay, so do, do we need a motion?
Can I, certification?
Certainly.
Thank you. I'm understanding that only the items that have been identified and summarized just now by Dave are going from the Volkart document to the draft document, is that what everybody understands? Okay, so I'm hearing conflicting conversation.
Understand that.
Yeah, and then everything else in the Volkart is not moving over.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood, that I understood it correctly, thank you.
Let me ask one more thing too. So I'm clear, uh, because this there isn't, there isn't that we know of a September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three pre-application conference, correct? Because the one that's on our, on the website, the one that came to us was originally dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. We don't know of another pre-application conference for a type three or anything like that. I mean, it wouldn't have been then. Okay.
Again, I wasn't a member of
Yeah, you were.
Development Services at that point in time, so.
Okay, all right.
Where did that come from?
It was referenced in Dave's summary, that, and it may have been actually from the applicant's may have been from the applicant's findings is where it may have come from, I could find it, but there's no point.
Okay.
You know.
No, I think, okay, so now do we need a motion for me to sign the, the findings that we've come up with? Or we're just gonna, was our denial enough?
I, I think you need to, you need a motion
Okay.
to approve findings and you need to describe what you concluded here and then have a vote on it.
Can I recommend a motion? Uh, if, if your motion is to approve, based on the conversation, it might be, uh, move to approve drafts findings as provided by Dave Lowman and amended.
What she said.
Would, no, somebody need a motion.
Okay.
Somebody's gotta be coherent longer.
I didn't catch the last two words.
As amended. Move to approve the draft findings provided by Dave Lowman, as amended.
Say signature.
Draft findings as amended by the city attorney.
Not, the motion, the motion is, the motion is, is to move, the motion is to approve the findings provided by the city attorney as amended for say the name of the action. It's right there, here. Right there.
Okay, I'm moved to approve.
The draft findings?
The draft findings for CPA two oh two three dash zero zero one, uh, as amended by city attorney.
The city attorney is not amended any, and amended. The motion is to approve the draft findings provided by the city attorney as amended for CPA twenty twenty-three zero zero one and REZ twenty twenty-three zero zero one, is there a second? Is there any more discussion?
If I, I know I'm not, I just want to be absolutely clear what, what as amended means to me is I will add to my findings the last paragraph of Mr. Volkarts' findings on page one, ending on the top of page two. And that's what we mean by as amended.
Yes. That's what we mean. We'll call though, please.
We have no choice.
Right. Chair Riley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shapiro?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Hazel?
No.
Commissioner DiMatto?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Volkart? Yes.
Okay, it's passed and, uh, you'll call me when it's ready to sign, okay.
Is this supposed to be passed down to you or this?
Well, this is the blank copy you gave me, that's. I'll take it if you don't want it.
If, if there are no propositions and remarks from the commission, we can adjourn.
Are you asking for propositions and remarks from the commission?
Are there any?
I have a remark. My concern on this was just because I still don't agree with the findings from, you know, from our original vote on this. So that was, it wasn't that I had an issue with this process.
I understand, understood.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry, you, you disagree with what? Sorry.
I, I still disagree with the findings as I did when we first voted on this at the last meeting, so, but the process is not something I had an issue with tonight.
Because it was so good. We managed to chase away both our interviewers, interviewees, we are adjourned, thank you very much.
Can I just say off the record, I can think of about three ways I've presented this in a way that would have been easier for you all, but I didn't think of them at the time.
Well, you were pressed with time.